Which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All please remain standing for a brief moment of silence. Thank you. Vanessa, please call roll.
Commissioner Steele Vogler?
Here.
Commissioner Vogler?
Here.
Commissioner Vogler?
Here. I'll note that we're being live streamed right now, it's being broadcast out to our YouTube channel. I'll also note that you are being recorded internally for our purposes in compiling the minutes into that, and anybody having business before the board, be able to please approach the bench and speak plainly and clearly into that microphone so we can pick it up internally. We are writing the great American novel today. This packet-
I thought we did that last week.
Oh, this is the thickest packet I think I've ever seen. It's what's up there. And so we're gonna try to get through this pretty expeditiously, but just a fair warning for our viewer, this is gonna take some time. Row officer reports some comments, I'm looking at the audience today. The only person here who probably could be construed as a row officer or representative thereof is Director Miko with JPO, representing for administration. Pat, you know anything about the Department of Attorney on the agenda?
I see most.
Beautiful, thank you. Public comments, anybody here wish to make public comment? Always a good sign. Fiscal and contractual. We have, it looks like two repository properties up today. One is Meyer Avenue, two is Sharp Street. Vanessa, what's the first one?
It'd be 211.
211. And I'll note that it looks like this was approved by the school district. Vanessa, was this approved, uh, no, municipality did not approve, but it did not deny either, which is significantly approved, legally speaking. But it was approved by the municipality, by the school district. Resolution recantable, if you're resolved by Lawrence County Board of Commissioners?
I interrupted, wasn't that, this is true.
Board is authorized, I screwed something up already.
No.
Board is authorized to execute an acceptance form made by Tricia Lee Hutchinson in the amount of $500 for property located in East Meyer Avenue, parlayed to number 25-232400 in the Shannon Township, I will take a motion of-
Second.
Second, motion second, any further discussion here, non-question motion, favorably. We do up and down, or, Vanessa, how we done, I forget. Do we do voice vote, or do we do?
Aye, call roll.
Call roll.
Okay, Commissioner Steele?
Yes.
Commissioner Vogler?
Yes.
Commissioner Vogler?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. 212. City of Newcastle, although this was denied. The bidder owes back taxes, which is a legitimate, I understand it's a legitimate reason for denial. And the school district did not respond. This is Sonia Stanley, bid of $1,000 for property located at 10 West Sharp Street, parlayed to number 08-029800, City of Newcastle. I'll take a motion to approve.
Second.
Second with a minor correction. If you look on the back of the resolution, it states that the city of Newcastle did not return their request. That should read the Newcastle area's school district.
Okay. Change that. We do a motion of second, any further discussion? So it changes Dan mentioned, and Vanessa, please call roll.
Commissioner Steele Vogler?
No.
Commissioner Vogler?
No.
Commissioner Vogler?
Nope.
Motion fails.
Thank you. No advertising for bids proposals, no receipt of bids proposals. We may have some resolutions further in here to proceed with bids. Actually, they probably should be in that section moving forward, we'll deal with that next time with any bids. We do have more registers from August 10th, August 9th, August 8th, August 5th, August 3rd, and July 29. And my colleagues probably more than met, check those over. Second. Motion second, any further discussion here, non-question motion, favorably, simply by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign, motion carries. Approved the notice from Tuesday, August 2nd, 2022, which was our last public meeting. I'll note that, you know, I had CCAP last week, and as a result, we do not have meetings on weeks when the county commission conference is occurring. So I'll give my colleagues, I'm gonna check those over, and then take a motion to accept and approve the notice, or make any changes if necessary.
Second.
Second, motion second, any further discussion here, non-question motion, favorably, simply by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign, motion carries. Merciful, your representation of written communications. Staff reports, is there any member of staff here that has any things to report about the Department of Attorney on the agenda? Thank you. Commissioner reports some comments, Loretta, you're on deck, first, would you?
Okay, very good, just briefly, I wanted to give an update on the opioid settlement. We have been speaking about it a couple of different meetings, and we've had meetings ourselves with all of our agencies and stakeholders. What we thought, the monies were going to be front-loaded for the first couple of years, Lawrence County has ultimately is receiving $6.8 million over 18 years. And the first understanding was that we would receive the bulk of the money over the first two years, so therefore, we set our plans, or the beginnings of our plans, focused on that. However, it has changed in the way the monies are going to be distributed. And they will be more evenly distributed over the next 18 years. With one exception, that as of right now, we did have a CCAP call with the Attorney General's Office, that we will be getting the first two-year payments this year. We're expected with basic paperwork that Joe and I have been talking on with the controller, with my fellow commissioners, that we would just fill the paperwork out to receive our first check hopefully by August 31st, and then later on in the year, the second one could be coming through. The amounts of monies that we do have coming in over the first couple of years, I have the totals for all of the 18 years, if anybody would like to see it. But our first installment would be 281 and odd dollars, thousand dollars. And then our second installment is a bit larger, $523,000, and we should be getting that by the end of the year. However, things could change, the trust is still being established, everything getting together, but the monies are there to be distributed. Without going into a lot of detail, it's a fluid situation, but the thing is that the monies are going to be coming directly to the counties. There's no middleman, there's no, you know, legislature involved with it. A trust has been set up, the monies will go directly there as they come in from the different distributors in Johnson and Johnson, and there are actually other litigants that we haven't had, we don't have settlements for yet, but we do have the monies from Johnson and Johnson and the distributors, so those monies are guaranteed to be in. And we should have approximately over three-quarters of a million to work with for the first year, and then decide how we're going to fund different programs from there. So that's, I'm happy to hear that we are moving forward with it, and we'll be having monies coming in to be able to enhance our drug prevention programming, addiction program, things like that. That's it.
Thank you for putting one on that, staying on topic, appreciate you.
You got it.
I have two things, one brief and the other written, just a written statement. Number one, yesterday was the opening of Lawrence County Fair, the official ribbon cutting was yesterday. Yeah, it was yesterday.
Yesterday.
And I'll note that Daniel Loretta had the opportunity to attend, and I saw that the picture, it was a nice picture of formally cutting the ribbon. I just wanted to know the reason for my absence, I would have been there. We had a meeting that was scheduled for over a month now. It's a very, very, very large company, actually based off Florida, that is looking to come into, maybe specifically Lawrence County, Western Pennsylvania. And the representatives from that company flew up yesterday to meet with myself. Leslie Oshie from Butler County was there, representatives from the governor's office, Harrisburg were there, DEP, and some other staff members with SPC, all part of that meeting to try to figure out how to best accommodate this company. So I wanted to note that for the record, give the reason why I was unable to attend the fair yesterday. We didn't want to reschedule, we had people coming flying in from different places.
And that happens.
Yes, it's one of those three. The other thing which is significant, I'll have a written statement here that I'll read, is that it pains me to report that the RIDC Mahoning deal, which has been in the works for over years, is on its last legs. For context, the Schick family sold the property for which RIDC is currently negotiating in the early 2010s, but retained a restrictive land covenant on the property. That restrictive land covenant prohibits the development of an RIDC office park or a large-scale distribution center, both of which are currently under consideration, with potential companies identified as prospective tenants. Interestingly, the argument against the development of those uses at this site relates to the increased activity that would be generated by the development of the site. However, the covenant allows for uses such as a casino, which would generate substantially more activity, noise pollution, light pollution, and traffic, than any of RIDC's proposed uses. For the past several months, RIDC has been negotiating with the Schick family, Carmen, Kendra, and Ken, and their attorneys, John DeCaro, Mark Hamilton, and Jim Manolis, to either abolish the restrictive land covenant entirely or adjust it to allow for the development of a new office park or distribution facility. RIDC has been willing to accommodate protections against excess noise, traffic, or light pollution to meet the Schicks' concerns. However, negotiations have stalled, and if they remain stalled for another few weeks, RIDC has directly stated to the Board of Commissioners, they will have to cut their losses and pull out of the deal. Mahoning Township, Mohawk Area School District, County of Lawrence, RIDC and our utility providers are all ready to go on this project, which has the potential to generate more economic impact for our county than any development since Carnegie Steel. The only holdup right now is the Schick family and their restrictive land covenant. The Schicks have a tremendous opportunity to be the heroes of this story, sit back down with RIDC, negotiate in earnest, and secure this development for our community. I would implore them to do so, and in doing so, create the most positive economic development Lawrence County has seen in generations. Sure, there will be more to report in the next coming weeks. But, that concludes my comments, and I'll turn it over to Dan for this. Thank you. I think we've covered enough this morning, so I'm ready to move forward. Thank you.
I'll just add, we do have a great conference at CCAP. That was good while we were gone. A lot of good information was passed along, thank you.
Absolutely.
Okay.
Up next, this is where you write up the novel. We've got four resolutions for our Mental Health Development Services Department Director Baldwin. If you'd be able to approach the bench, and Vanessa, what's the resolution number for the?
213.
213. Thank you, so we've got 213, 214, 215, 216. And unless there's any objections after Scott's done sort of gone through what we're doing here, we'll take those all in bulk. Scott?
Okay. Yeah, these are three easy ones. First one is Contract, which is Lawrence County MHS and Iron and String Life Enhancement. This is a renewal, they provide home integrity for our developmental services, as well as provide transportation. They're located just over the line, they're in Louisville, Ohio. The next one is for A&R, it's Alliance for Nonprofit located in Butler County. They will provide investigative services for us, and they also provide transportation. Again, this is another renewal for us. Third is Alleghenies Unlimited located in Johnstown, PA. And again, it's a home and community respite for developmental services, all three are renewals. The fourth is a new contract with Children's Advocacy Center, this is a mental health contract. Again, these all run from this week, July 1st, 2022 to June 30th, 2023. Children's Advocacy really does a community for a long time, they do all the trauma-based, health and form care. This contract is to supplement some of those trauma services that are covered under a degree, you know, of course expenses are up with all of the providers, we don't want to see that service get impacted. So we're supplementing with big sponsors. I'm gonna give you the motion on all three really quickly, that was your. So for A&R, three or four? I have four.
Okay.
So for Iron and String, the contract amount is $30,000. For A&R, contract amount is for $55,000. For Alleghenies Unlimited, the contract amount is $50,000. And for Children's Advocacy Center, the contract is for $27,684. Again, these are all paid through block grant funding, no cost.
Questions on that, Scott?
No.
Take motion to approve, 213, 3216.
Second.
Second, motion second, any further discussion here, non-question motion. Vanessa, please call roll.
Commissioner Steele Vogler?
Yes.
Commissioner Vogler?
Yes.
Commissioner Vogler?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you, next question.
Thank you.
Next, Superintendent slash Ward Moalester, we've got a number, three resolutions it looks like, for considerations for jail. These will be 2, how do I put this?
17.
Thank you. 217, 218, and 219 will be taking these separately, assuming they proceed. So first on deck, we have resolution to discuss a possible agreement of contract with Stanley Security. What do we have going on here? So with, and maybe we have the wrong, definitely have the wrong resolution in front of us. This is an annual contract with Stanley Convergent Security Services, with my understanding, is there one of the people we've gotten quotes from?
Right.
That we haven't actually put out for bid yet.
It has to be put out for bid, right.
Do we have bid docs on that?
In the pack, in this? Okay.
Loretta, I'm gonna turn, I mean, we can always amend this resolution to allow for taking it out to bid. But Loretta, I'm gonna turn it over, what are you, just this prison board?
It is, right, it is. I know that we, I know we have to put it out for bid, this is something that is definitely, we need to have it. So if we do need to table this, or not take action on it at this point in time, and then come back for it to do the bid, I don't know what you want to do.
You know what?
Because I thought it was actually just attempting to get the bids, not a particular one.
I'm looking at the agenda, I don't even think we can amend it because of the changes to Sunshine Act.
Okay.
This is so, showing you every contract with Stanley Security versus entering into, or taking it out to bid.
Right.
You know, last thing, what I want to do is be in violation of the Sunshine Act.
So then my suggestion would be that we load it down?
Yeah, sure.
We'll load it down, and then move forward, we'll move forward from there. Unless, Dan, you heard the senior state from here, do you think that's best?
No, I think the fact that it's been posted as such.
Yeah.
We have no choice but to vote it down, but with the understanding that the action we're taking is not necessarily a negative action against this particular company.
We can't take it with the company at this point in time.
They may bid, and they may be the ultimate low bidder, lowest responsible bidder. So eventually, we may be taking positive action on this, but at this point, I think we have no choice but to do this.
Right.
And so I would take a motion to approve, we did the same thing with our boss force, 217.
Second.
Second. Good motion second, any further discussion here, non-question on motion, Vanessa, please call roll.
Commissioner Steele Vogler?
No.
Commissioner Vogler?
No.
Commissioner Vogler?
No.
Motion fails.
Thank you. Next, a resolution for discussion possible through to amend into a contract with Keith Conisher and Network, and what do we have going on here?
You got a contract.
And, pardon my ignorance on this, we don't have to take this one out for bid?
This is a renewal of the contract.
I'm fine with how long, I'm fine with it. Does the solicitor check this over?
Yes.
Okay, but I'm good with it. Dan, what are your thoughts?
As long as the solicitor is comfortable with this action, then I will take.
Okay. All right, I'll take a motion to approve, 218.
Second.
Second, good motion to second, any further discussion here, non-question motion, Vanessa, please call roll.
Commissioner Steele Vogler?
Yes.
Commissioner Vogler?
Yes.
Commissioner Vogler?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. And now we have 219, which is discussion of possible group of doc transitioning policy at Lawrence County Corrections.
I'm looking to get a policy in place with doc transition policy.
Here's the question I have for this. Is this prison board vote, you read my mind, as opposed to a commissioner vote? Because the policy-
It's a policy issue.
And believe me, I know county government's confusing as hell, I still don't understand all of it. But, you know, it's, the more I'm looking at it, I think it should go before prison board. Which is no good deal, because we have it tomorrow, and we can get it on agenda and pass it tomorrow. But yeah, my understanding, any policy decisions, we handle money, but any policy decisions that come out of, that come out of the bidder, if let it through the jail, need to be done through prison board, as opposed to through a commissioner.
And I'll take, I'll take, right, I recommended that it come before the commissioners because of the policy that it was, but we'll vote it down here and then bring it up at prison board for a meeting for tomorrow. Yeah, I thought policies such as that would have to go before us.
Could I respectfully suggest that we table this? Because I don't want to be on record as necessarily be the goal of this.
Okay.
I prefer to table it.
Let's see.
Then if the prison board approves it, then it becomes a moot point, if you're voting.
Okay. Let's do that.
And I'll note, just for clarity sake, Ward, your past managerial experience comes from the state, correct?
Yes.
What you get is a much different system than the counties.
Different, yes.
And so, you know, it's, you're-
It's hard enough for us to understand.
Yeah.
Definitely, we weigh on that.
Yeah, it's, you're on a, you're doing a great job in terms of operations over this. You're just sort of, I would say you're on clerical or administrative learning curve right now in terms of what boards to go to, how to do the bidding, you're, I got full faith and confidence.
And listen, when you put something like this together to this extent, I mean, that it's complimentary to you, and we'll work through it and get it done, and there's so many things that do need to be done, that you're taking the bull by the horns, and note that it's appreciated, and we'll work through the little hiccups and get everything taken care of.
Commissioner, that's not all.
I know that, I know, I know, you have a great staff, they're- And we appreciate that, so these small hiccups, we all apologize for my interpretations of them as well. We talk so much and do so many different things, it's like, check this, or move that, or do this, or this has to go through this board and that board. So I think I've clarified it enough, maybe the way to go through it is prison board everything, monies definitely to the commissioners. That's how we'll work, that's the statement moving forward.
Yeah. It's, yeah.
But please continue.
County, when there's, when there's 20 different boards and 15 different executives, you know, it, home rule sometimes looks more and more appealing. But that's another conversation for-
But job well done with the thought of that.
We can get it straight.
Yes.
That will be good.
Got the first.
Okay, so we'll vote to table this.
Yes, I'll take a motion to table 218. Second, you know, a motion to second, any further discussion here, non-question motion to table, Vanessa, please call roll.
Commissioner Steele Vogler?
Yes.
Commissioner Vogler?
Yes.
Commissioner Vogler?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Chairman, before the warden leaves, let me circle back, if I could, to the first issue of the cameras. I just want to make certain the record reflects that this board is in agreement to move forward with the bidding process necessary.
Yes.
We'll take that formal vote next week, once we get everything straight around.
Because we'll have prison board-
All right.
To present it to prison board-
All right.
To move forward to the commissioners, and we will vote on for next week.
Because I know you're anxious to get this done.
Well, I also have a few other questions, and I think we'll have to get it out of the board for bids, so.
Well, you bring that as both commissioners, bring those for prison board meeting.
Yeah, and then we'll move forward with them. Okay.
Get everything I get, any given Tuesday, you're in pretty good shape until the next, until the next, either CCAP conference or probably, well, the CCAP conference will be the election first, election.
Election.
Yeah, until the election, so you're going to Tuesday.
Get them moving, thank you.
Up next, 220, Airport Authority. We have Mac Parrot to be reappointed for a term commencing on June 1/22, expire on June 1/27. Lives in Shannon Township, been a member since 2007. On the, that, well, I go to those meetings every once in a while, I'm a Mac, a normal person. I have to go to know, based on campaign promises I made when I ran for election. That being said, Mac's a great person, a good asset to that authority. Questions on that? Any questions? No. Before, just as a reminder note, I believe we'll be having Airport Authority, at least the chairman and their engineers, where that's a public meeting here sometime next month, to go over with us and share with the public, the architectural is done for the potential new expansion of this terminal building. We certainly will not want to showcase that, that a little hard work into it. So I'll take a motion to approve.
Second.
Second, motion second, any further discussion here, non-question on the motion, Vanessa, please call roll.
Commissioner Steele Vogler?
Yes.
Commissioner Vogler?
Yes.
Commissioner Vogler?
Yes. Oh, no, no, yeah, no, thank you, I appreciate the silence there. I do that every time, every single time I do that. And just you go to the rhythm thing, and you vote no so sparingly. Yeah, please record by votes, Vanessa.
Motion carries two more.
Thank you, appreciate your passion for me. I was already on to the next one, which is Director Kenny. Thanks guys. For our some official small business plan, small business funding. I'll note that the county received an official allocation of federal funding from the federal government from the Department of Treasury. What we're doing here is, we reached out, or more accurately, any and planning office reached out to businesses which applied for county business interruption grants previously, but for which we ran out of money. Didn't have enough out of the CARES fund to be able to provide for them. And this is, this is sort of clearing our backlog of companies which responded to us and which are still in business. So Amy, I'll turn it over to you.
Yeah, basically what you said, these are, when the county received the extra funding under the Michael Rescue Plan Act, commissioners decided they wanted to allocate a certain portion of those funds to help the businesses we weren't able to help under the CARES Act. Under the CARES Act, we were hopeful that we would get some additional funds, so we did go back out to those businesses and did a third round in the event, because we did receive extra CARES money. That didn't happen, but we kept that list. We reached out to everybody that was on that list, that were, that was still in business, and other ones that we received, we gave them a deadline. We received, I think, close to 28, I don't know the exact number, back in time, met all the requirements. They had our auditors take a look at everything to make sure that everything was in order, and the list is attached to your resolution, it adds up to almost $600,000 that we're able to fund. A majority of them are the full $25,000 that the commissioners have decided on under the CARES Act. There are some that are smaller amounts, just because of the way their profits came in and their losses over the years that we asked them to provide. But they're, they're all done, happy to help them.
Absolutely, thank you.
This list will be made public for anybody that wants to see it, as are any expenditures made out of the county. So if any of the news organizations wish, whether it be D W or Nick, wish to see the list, if they just, any big care management job here.
After I go to the call, I'm giving the list, um, when all we are prepared, once the resolution is passed, send the board letters to everyone that lists as possible in achieving funds.
Sounds good. Any questions, comments from you?
I'm just glad that we were able to accommodate those that, it was sad that we asked for applications before, and then unfortunately we ran out of money. So very, very glad that we were able to support those that are still in business, because unfortunately some did close their doors. But very happy to accommodate those that are still in business, to assist them, yes.
And then again, just to clarify, we're using ARCA money, right?
Yes.
You have, you have brought this in front of Corey Johnston and his organization, our auditors, who basically review what we propose to do, and they say, yep, that's within the limits of what we're allowed to do with these dollars. And then the third question would be, you indicated that you did have a good number of businesses that applied in a timely manner, were there any applications that did come in after the deadline? You don't have to name them, but were there?
No, there were, there were probably three, and they, and it wasn't even like the day after, it was like a week later, so.
All righty.
We didn't even take the time to look at them, because we were very specific in our letter when we sent it out. We gave everybody a good amount of, a good amount of time to respond, ask any questions, get their information into us. So no, they were not considered, and that was obviously, I brought that to your guys' side, right? We made that, you guys made that decision. And again, to clarify, too, this is not, I did get a couple calls, this was not a new grant program. This was, only people eligible were the ones that had applied under the CARES Act, and unfortunately we couldn't fund them under the CARES Act. This was, only people eligible were the ones that had applied under the CARES Act and unfortunately we couldn't fund them under the CARES Act, but thankfully, I just hung up on you guys.
Kind of on our waiting list.
Yeah, yes. There were waiting guys. Um, and I've put it, Dave Pressford and I have been working very closely together. There's, there should be a transfer on the agenda to transfer those funds. Um, we've worked very well on the timings for people to come in and either pick up their checks or they can actually have them electronically transferred to their bank accounts. And Dave and I have worked very closely on that too, so.
As always, thank you for your hard work.
Yes, thank you.
That clears that backlog, um. And. We will each allocate those funds.
Yes.
Um, I'll take a motion.
As a second.
Yeah.
So moved.
Second, motion seconded for discussion, hearing none. Question on motion, Vanessa please call the roll.
Commissioner Steele Vogel.
Yes.
Commissioner Vogler.
Yes.
Commissioner Boyd.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, actually we have six resolutions listed as J P O and they're not, they're not.
They're actually L C Y.
They're all C Y.
Okay.
I can't leave.
Chair is out for everybody. All right, so we've got, in that case, this will be two twenty-two through two thirty-two. Again, unless there are any objections, we'll take them all and go like once.
Yes.
Once everything's gone here. Thank you. Um, so if, if you guys would be able to start the top and, and a brief synopsis is all that's necessary. We don't need to go into programmatic nuances. Um, just what it, what it does and what it's going to cost, unless Mike, oh, which one, one dive into more detail on it, this was a good one.
You could have, listen, I have the hook packed.
It's time, we're going to go down to it.
Oh, there you go.
He's got a cane over here, so he can hit you with a cane. This becomes very commonplace, but I've been doing this for so many years right now, that the biggest. Thing, and I'm going to start with this and I'm going to start to go through my contracts. This year has probably been the biggest change with some of the per diem, the cost and the rationale before that. And a lot of it has to do with, with family first, a lot of it has to do with some other issues with. You know, that, um, that J P O can't capitalize on, so we have to look at rates. One of the biggest problems that we're facing both. N C Y S and J P O throughout the Commonwealth is the closing of security tensions. We're aware of all that, that. The, the reduction, a lot of placements have closed out wings of their programs where they're no longer having a service or the kind of shelter that the client enters. Becomes more and more difficult. And. Our, our people on the other end or the, the receiving end, which are the service providers. Are able to, uh, capitalize somewhere on that. Because everyone's scrambled, so you see some things went up and down. So what we do in juvenile probation, we always look for. Um, the service has to match the need of the child specifically. And I know Judge Akers, that one about that, I know Judge Hodge was adamant about that over the years. And, um, and, 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 um. So in juvenile probation, uh, we, we have to have some backlog and things right now. So we're going to use the contracts. Um, not, only if, um, there's a need to, of course, and secondly, if there's a shortage. Of shelter events, we, we've added a few things, city mission, which is the first one on there, is, is, we're using it primarily for shelters. There has another array that we found. In our search. That, um. That with city mission, we may need done in the case of the shortage of shelter.
The only one that's really raising a red flag for me is pathways.
Mm-hmm.
Um. What's, what's going on there? It looks like we're jumping from, for most of these, one forty, one forty-five, one thirty-five, we're, we're getting pretty high to the two hundreds there.
I'll take this, you, you can take it. I, I mean, I, I, go ahead.
So, so pathways for a number of years held their rate. Got to where year over year, they didn't receive a percentage increase from us. And so their current rate. Um, two twenty-six, twenty-three, you'll find is competitively priced in comparison to other programs. So their percentage increase is high, but their actual per diem per child, per day. Falls on the lower end of the scale in comparison to. Perseus House and, and the list of, of other providers. Pathways would be by the per diem rate, one of the providers we look at. Early in our process of trying to place a child, either on the delinquency or the dependency side, because of how competitive that rate is. But I want to say, uh. Somewhere between four and six years. That the rate that was the baseline coming into this year.
Probably ten.
Yeah, hell. Yeah, so that's, I don't know if that answers, answers the question, but it is a high percentage increase.
Point, yeah, that's one, that's what, I'm glad you provided these, by the way, these are, these are useful.
Absolutely.
Um, but you know, that, that, that makes sense to me, that they're on the, still competitive.
They're, they're still competitive.
Based on market, based on the market.
And, and, and when I tell you for us, when it comes to taking a kid, um, I have to tell you, they, they've been. And, and, uh, not that I want to overpay anybody because they are, they are comparative, as John said, and. If you go down all the contracts that Coresoft, these are all in-home services, community all-in-home services. These are things and they pretty much stay the same rate. We use those, um, to deter, having to remove a kid and placement in the first place. So those are normal and those are, um. Small amounts and community all tax, the other the grant, so it's a ninety-ten match for the, for the, uh, nurturing parent program. So kind of increase ten percent of whatever we're paying in that. Then we go on, but like, like Justice Works is the same thing. They're just in case programs, is what I like to call. They have a lot of services that should we, should we lose, um, they're, they're, they have functional family therapy, they, they have community service. Uh, people that'll come in, which we've had that structured and we do that anyways, you want the programming. Um, they have truancy foster programs and, and we handled that with, with both Craig and with, um. With some academy for years. Um, but anyway, if you get down to pathways, it's the one you pointed out. A lot of those are just in case pathways. It's the. The biggest difference that John explained, the rate from law, one forty, one forty-five for about ten years. And they probably needed to give themselves increases so that it wouldn't have been sticker shock all at once from here to there. And, um, so that's a valid point. I appreciate John for explaining that.
Um, any questions, comments from the parolees here?
I just want to say, Pat brings up a very big point with the, um, security tensions. It, it is a, a, a huge, um, dilemma. Where to, where to place, um, you know, the, the, the delinquent kids charged, whether they be charged as an adult, and Dan is, is familiar. We had discussion with, um, our, one of our fellow commissioners, several commissioners from Mercer County. I participated in, in a couple of Zoom calls trying to figure out what to do with. The, the juveniles that need to go to security tensions, that they've been charged with those crimes because yes, the facilities are shut down and. You have to find a place and you don't have the time to look around for something, so you have to have those just in case places. Ready for you to be able to.
We've really expanded out, but we, we've had to, we've had to look towards Ohio, which is already one of our contracts.
Yeah. Right.
Stupid bill. Now we have another one that's just beyond that. We're working on getting a contract in placement. But, um. Like I said, it's locally where, where we should have a secure, a securely detained juvenile. Um, we're using group home settings. That's where, like, he's done for pathways.
Is, is George Junior, I believe, there ready for licensing to, to be secure? They may have five or eight bands or something.
Everyone's on a golf program.
Okay.
Go secure. They were talking about going secure. I don't, I don't know that was, I was talking to Josh Lester, I don't know where it's coming. And, and we haven't seen that.
Okay.
It hasn't come to fruition. And the move towards going to secure it just requires a lot of work.
Yes, yes.
Like, that's, that's one of the issues.
Um, one of the things that might be helpful from an administrative standpoint, from a contract management standpoint. Um, if we'd be able to compile a list, I'm sure we have this, of all of the current contracts that we have out, all of our current providers. Um, specifically what they do, so you know, what differentiates, um, you know, Bethany Christian Services from Crossroads. Um, and, uh, pricing associated with each one of those. I just, I, I. Whenever you guys get a free, you can have a free moment, which I know is rare up at, at C Y S, um, and at, at J P O. Um, I'd like to, uh, I have to use, interesting to look at.
I, I will say this, if I could, um, Mike has been thrown into this from, from nowhere and he's really. He handles that as a C Y S. They handle all contracts for J P O for delinquency. So they have, I mean, there's a tough job on that. And he's really dug in and I know they've negotiated some contract rates, which, which is good if you can keep them and you can hold it at a certain rate. We, we never realized that, why should Donna Danny County get any cheaper rate for the same facility, for the same service that we are? And, and, and they have looked into that. And, and when I tell you they're looking into that, they're questioning that and. They don't want to give you a straight answer right away, but it does take a little bit of pressure. We're in a new era of contract and I disagree with it. I think the rate should be the rate for the kid, for the service they're providing. And I will be able to at least state that, um, I can be voiced and pulped, I have, as long as I continue to be the director of juvenile. Involved with the state through the juvenile board judges commission.
Absolutely. And Commissioner, we do have. We, we have compiled the rates year over year. We went back to this most recent reviews, nineteen-twenty. And so then, when we did negotiation, and for the first time ever, we were negotiating with all of the providers. And what we did in the negotiation is lay out a methodology that if they hadn't got a rate increase. Um, since nineteen-twenty, we applied a two to three percent.
What the year nineteen-twenty?
Fiscal.
Twenty nineteen, twenty twenty.
Twenty fiscal.
Everybody had the same look on their. He did a great search.
My great grandfather was a commissioner.
And on the horse and buggy. But we negotiated with them. And our challenge, our challenge has been between both departments. What, how can we do our best? How are we good stewards to the county? While also not hurting our network?
Yes.
Right? And what can they live with? Because providers were coming out with twenty, thirty, forty percent rate.
Right.
Increases and then we had to work that down, but do it at a point where they wouldn't walk away from the table and say. Well, we're not, we're just not going to serve Lawrence County kids. And I think as a team, we've been successful there.
That's, that's the fun, that's the fun end of the change that's going on right now.
Yes. Yes.
There, there are fewer beds and, and more people to feed them right now, so it's, it's advantage service provider right now.
Absolutely.
All right, any, any additional questions, Watson?
Yeah.
I will take a motion to approve two twenty-two through two thirty, so.
So moved.
Second, motion seconded for discussion, hearing none. Question on the motion, Vanessa please call the roll.
Commissioner Steele Vogel.
Yes.
Commissioner Vogler.
Yes.
Commissioner Boyd.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Good work, guys. Appreciate you all.
Thank you guys so much.
Thank you gentlemen. Have a good day, everybody.
Thank you.
Now you're getting me with this game.
Up next, two thirty-three. Um, this has been approved by the solicitor. It's been reported recently that the Polaris Equity Group has acquired the Elwood City Hospital. Um, they're, they're going to, uh, turn that facility back to productive use, uh, which we are certainly thankful for. Um, however, as, as a part of that, that acquisition, they, they went to all three taxing bodies, I believe were the last to be approached and negotiated. Um, I want to say it was like, I want to say it was a fifty percent reduction on the back property taxes owed. Um, which, when you consider we were getting none of those taxes.
Nothing, correct.
Um. As of, um, uh, as of just a couple months ago, uh, we're, we're certainly, uh, uh, glad to be recouping some of that loss. Um, and even more glad to see that facility returned to productive use for the, uh, for the citizens of, uh, Elwood City and for Lawrence County. Um, so they'll be making a, a one-time lump sum payment of. One hundred and seventy thousand, five hundred and forty-seven dollars and eighty-three cents to us on or before August thirty-one, two thousand and twenty-two. Um, which in turn will satisfy, um, all of the back taxes still owed on that, on that piece of property.
Yes.
Um, so we're, again, just, just, we're just glad that it's being returned to productive use. And we're glad that they were willing, um, to pay a recent portion of those back taxes owed, because otherwise we would not, we just simply would not get. Get any money at all, any of it. And they've been doing the same with Elwood and Elwood Electric for that matter.
Very good.
So, questions, comments on it?
Yeah.
The, uh, the borough manager in Elwood City deserves a good deal of credit. He's been on top of this. Has been devoting a lot of hours to this, uh, to this matter. I'm sure that the borough solicitor has as well, so I'm glad to see this. Thank you.
Absolutely.
Absolutely. Um, I'll take a, I'll take a motion to approve two thirty-three.
So moved.
Second, a motion seconded for discussion, hearing none. Question on motion, Vanessa please call the roll.
Commissioner Steele Vogel.
Yes.
Commissioner Vogler.
Yes.
Commissioner Boyd.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Two thirty-four. Actually, it's twelve. Um. This is some anticipated funding that would fall into the Marcellus Legacy Revenue Account. Um, we use that account at this point pretty much solely for the maintenance of our parks. Um, with the storm that happened the other day, as well as some of the capital investments that we're making, it quite falls to minimize the risk of additional, uh, additional falls. Um, we, uh, we need to, uh, we, we see some anticipated revenue, we need to account for that revenue and then account for the, for the expense. What should, it's going to be used to, number one, clear stabbed bike trail after the, the massive storm that we had the other day. Um, as well as, um, uh, service some of our match for, uh, some of the safety improvements we're making that are later. Questions, comments on that?
Yeah.
Hearing none, I'll take a motion to approve two thirty-four.
So moved.
Second, motion seconded for discussion, hearing none. Question on motion, Vanessa please call the roll.
Commissioner Steele Vogel.
Yes.
Commissioner Vogler.
Yes.
Commissioner Boyd.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Two thirty-five, this is what Amy talked about earlier, just moving, um, some money out of the, it's, it's all within the ARPA fund.
Yeah.
Um, from contingency in the ARPA fund to small business grants in the ARPA fund. Moving that money around allows us to pay out those businesses. Questions, comments on that?
Daniel confused.
Yeah, well, no, no, I, I think I'm all right. Um, I'm all right. Yep, I just have a look ahead and I'm no longer confused. All right, at least for the next ten seconds. Thank you. Um, so I'll take a motion, appreciate you very much.
So moved.
Second, motion seconded for discussion, hearing none. Question on motion, Vanessa please call the roll.
Commissioner Steele Vogel.
Yes.
Commissioner Vogler.
Yes.
Commissioner Boyd.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Two thirty-six. Is ten thousand dollars, public safety, uh, moving from maintenance. For, for con, some additional context here, the public safety has effectively two funds. One is EMS. Which is our general fund. Um, the second is, um. Their own designated nine-one-one fund, which is where the state revenue for nine-one-one comes into, and it's actually. More heavily audited than most of our other funds. We have to report that to P E M A as well as our, our external, external auditors. Um, P E M A has changed the, uh. Uh, the chart of accounts out of that fund numerous times in the past couple of years. As a result, it's a little difficult to budget, um, because we don't know in certain instances what money's going to be taken out of what line item in the new chart of accounts. And so there's going to be some money movement within that fund as we figure out what gets paid out of what for P E M A's reporting purposes. So what we're doing here, we're just transferring ten thousand dollars from maintenance radio repair systems to ma, to maintenance repair contracts. It's for the same purpose of what it was going to be expended for, it just has to come out of a different line item per P E M A requirement. Questions on that?
Yeah.
Two thirty-six, I'll take a motion.
So moved.
Second, motion seconded, any further discussion, hearing none, uh, question on motion, Vanessa please call the roll.
Commissioner Steele Vogel.
Yes.
Commissioner Vogler.
Yes.
Commissioner Boyd.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Two thirty-seven, this is again a simple one for voluntary transfers and commissioners contingency, five train of voluntary contingency. Uh, there's some overages in that department, some of the various line items, so we're just getting that, uh, voluntary's office ready. Um, to start moving some money around to accommodate. Questions, comments on that?
Yeah.
Take a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second.
A motion seconded, any further discussion, hearing none, question on the motion, Vanessa please call the roll.
Commissioner Steele Vogel.
Yes.
Commissioner Vogler.
Yes.
Commissioner Boyd.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Um, next up, our admin transfers. First on, we're moving a thousand dollars from jail contingency to jail advertising. That will help pay for what we talked about a little earlier, from advertising, cost of advertising for this bid. And please stop me if you want to get any questions. Um, public defender's office moving forty dollars from contingency to their attorney's fees, unusual amount of bills from other counties. Um, to represent our parolees in other counties, a lot of our parolee, parolees. Rick Russo moving some money from his contingency to maintenance, to cover maintenance agreement for copiers. Rick Russo, um, moving some money from contingency, they, they had to, um, uh, they had to move the new office, they had to order a new letter, had envelopes, business cards, uh, address, name, et cetera, et cetera, so that, that any mail that goes out comes back to the appropriate, uh, office billing once that move is officially made. Public defender, uh, there's a minor increase in some law book prices, twenty-three bucks moving from their contingency to their subscriptions. We do try to budget down to the dollar here.
Absolutely.
Um, public safety, um, this looks like, I believe this is coming out of EMA, um, but they're moving it from EMA contingency to travel and training. Um, they're, they obviously do a number of trainings in that department, uh, which is unlike most other departments where they have to travel around quite a bit. Uh, you have that combined gas prices, you're seeing an increase in travel and training costs. Sheriff, he's moving fifteen thousand dollars from contingency to vehicle expenses, gas.
Just to show that, that, that county government is not immune to the rate of inflation.
Absolutely.
We're, we're affected by it just like everybody else.
Absolutely. Courts, I guess this is it. Um, we're moving some money from the court contingency to court material and supplies to cover, um, some of the, specifically juror box chairs for the, uh, the new courtroom five facility. The other half of the money is coming out of the judge's discretionary. Jail moving from their contingency fund, three hundred and thirty-five dollars to medical expenses and forty dollars to postage to cover some unanticipated, uh, expenses out of those line items. CYS, uh, invoices were not paid prior year, so removing some money from promising practices to contract services, um, thirty thousand dollars. That's it?
That's it.
Uh, questions, comments on A through K, any admin transfers? Hearing none, question, I'll take a motion to approve admin transfers A through, A through K.
So moved.
Second, a motion second, any further discussion, hearing none, question on the motion, all in favor, please, anybody sending aye?
Aye.
Aye.
All pros, same sign, motion carries. Um, we still have the resolution on the table. I think we should be able to vote on that probably by the end of the month. Still checking some things out on that one. Um, but we'll keep that on the table unless, if you have any objection. And ordinances, none, announcements, we kept it to an hour.
That's not bad.
That ain't bad.
That's not bad at all.
Very good.
Yes.
Uh, next commissioner's meeting will be on Tuesday, August twenty-third, twenty twenty-two, in this room at, at ten o'clock. Prison board meeting tomorrow on August seventeenth, and retirement board meeting, I think, immediately following. Um, this may actually probably whenever Sarah, I don't know if Sarah's here yet, I haven't, I haven't seen her walking around, but whenever Sarah gets her retirement board meeting. Any additional, or public comments?
I, I commend you for running this as quickly as you did, considering all that we have. It's a very nice draw.
Everything that you did. I, I do, I do have a, if I could add, just something in closing. We had spoken earlier just about the RIDC project and I, I will look right out to the audience and explore those involved with this process and these meetings with the Schick family, with their solicitors, with RIDC to really take into consideration that impact that this will have on our county to move something forward. And I know everybody's doing their best to get this accomplished, but as you stated earlier, we are in the eleventh hour. That's the, the proper terminology. We are, we are at that last, last ditch effort and I, I would like for everybody to dig in and do their best and really open up their minds to just see the, the big picture of what this can do for Lawrence County and know that we as commissioners, a thousand percent behind the project. You know, Dan being on the board with RIDC, uh, myself with economic development, uh, we, we just need to, to do our best to move forward with this. And I just implore those that are involved to, to really move on this because it's something that we will certainly change the landscape of Lawrence County. Yes, thank you.
Thank you. All right, uh, any other new business to be brought before the board? Seeing none, we will adjourn to Lawrence County Board of Commissioners, just under a minute.
I'm upstairs, I'll be right back.
Okay. Dan, walk upstairs.
Oh.
Don't run.
I should, I should.
And I call the one day.
Yeah.
I just have to be out of there. And I want to.